Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, October the 2nd, 2023. This evening, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our village clerk, Promote Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order. Before calling the roll, I would like to ask for two motions. Each one would be to permit First Trustee Pure Slovan and then secondly, trustee Suckar to participate in this evening's meeting via remote Zoom. A motion would be in order for trustee Pure Slovan, trustee Robinson, seconded by trustee Johnson. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Kuhn.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Vandyson.
Aye. The motion passes. And then secondly, a motion to permit trustee Suckar to attend and participate in this evening's meeting via Zoom. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Johnson. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Suckar, trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Kuhn.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovan.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Vandyson.
Aye. The motion passes. And so, the clerk would please officially call the roll for this evening's meeting.
Trustee Suckar.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Kuhn.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Pure Slovan.
Here.
Trustee Klein.
Here.
Mayor Vandyson.
Aye. The motion passes. The next item is a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order. Trustee Kuhn, seconded by trustee Suckar. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody wants to have removed? If not, please call the roll.
Trustee Suckar.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Kuhn.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovan.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Vandyson.
Aye. The motion passes. There were two proclamations this evening that I would like to read. The first one is on domestic violence. Whereas domestic violence is a prevalent societal problem harming victims, their children, family, friends, and communities at large. And whereas domestic violence knows no boundaries, impacting women, men, and children of every age, race, ethnicity, economic background, sexual orientation, and belief. And whereas nearly one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. And whereas many victims are deprived of their autonomy, liberty, insecurity, and face tremendous threats to their health, safety, and economic security, as well as the health, safety, and economic security of their children at the hands of their bad oars. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, service, and assistance to victims. And whereas commendation should be given to agencies to assist the victims of domestic violence and who devote their efforts toward ending domestic violence throughout our state and our nation. Now therefore, I, George Van Dusen, mayor of the village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and call upon the people of Skokie to raise awareness about the societal problem of domestic violence throughout our community and its devastating effects on families and communities. And I would like to ask Rebecca Weineger, who is the head of Domestic Violence, she's an attorney with the North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic.
Thank you, Mayor, village manager, trustees, and the people of Skokie. Good evening to all of you, and thank you so much for including me tonight. I'm Rebecca Weineger, the director of the Domestic Violence Law Practice for the North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic in Highland Park. I'm so happy to see you, Cam, a woman that I admire, and I'm so grateful to share this evening with you. We provide legal, free legal representation in the areas of domestic violence, immigration, and housing. We are so grateful for our partnership with the village of Skokie to provide these services to survivors of domestic violence. This year for Domestic Violence Awareness Month and for the year that follows, I ask that we work harder to see each other. We are all carrying something, something that perhaps rises to the level of trauma. More and more of us have survived a mass shooting or another threat against our safety or the safety of our children. All of us are living with personal stress, and people you know, even if they haven't told you yet, are right now surviving domestic violence. The incident rates are too high to assume that you don't know a survivor. And for those survivors, there is no peace. There is nowhere they can go for sanctuary or belief. Their relationships with their abuser, their intimate partner, their parent, their roommate, or their classmate, someone who's supposed to care for them or even protect them, makes them feel small, unloved, and unsafe. They don't get a break from that abuse, which is sometimes a drip, 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 slow burn, and sometimes life-threatening. And when domestic violence becomes life-taking, the entire community becomes survivors. Domestic violence-related homicides are up 64% since the beginning of the pandemic in Illinois, and orders of protection are up over 55%. We are all affected, even if we are a town or a village or even farther away. So let's really see each other. Let's understand our common humanity and carrying weights that we can't see, but we recognize and choose to make our personal and thereby our collective burdens lighter. We are all carrying something. And the survivors we serve, the survivors of domestic violence, are surviving all the time in the most sacred of spaces, and they need us to start nearly by seeing them. I am grateful for all of you, and I look forward to the work that we can and will do together to see survivors and make our community safer for survivors and therefore for all of us. Thank you again for your dedication to keeping our communities light on domestic violence.
Thank you. Thanks to the North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic for all of the work they do. We appreciate it very much.
Can I add a quick comment to that?
Make a very.
May I add a quick comment to that?
Oh, sure.
Rebecca, I just want to publicly acknowledge you as well, and thank you so much for the work that you do, because I have witnessed firsthand how you have been an advocate for your clients and have helped, you and your team have helped make these individuals who are in dire need to be whole and complete wherever they are in their journey. And I thank you so much for the difference that you make for people. So, thank you.
The second proclamation is, whereas the arts and humanities are the embodiment of all things beautiful and entertaining in the world, the enduring record of human achievement. Whereas the arts and humanities enhance every aspect of life in Skokie, improving our economy, enriching our civic life, driving tourism, and exerting a profound positive influence on the education of our children. And whereas art education research shows that the arts help to foster discipline, collaboration, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills, we're also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of the beauty of diversity and cross-cultural understanding. And whereas we use the humanities, history, literature, philosophy, to explore what it means to be human. And whereas the arts and humanities play a unique, intrinsically valuable role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our state. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades. And now therefore, I, George Van Dusen, mayor of the village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Skokie Arts and Humanities Month and call upon all citizens to celebrate and to promote the arts and culture in the village of Skokie. And I'd like to call on Jeff Rhodes, the vice chair of the Skokie Arts Commission, to receive the proclamation and to give us some words this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Van Dusen and the Board of Trustees for recognizing the importance of the arts. And thank you to the many amazing organizations producing arts programming in Skokie. I'm Jeff Rhodes, vice chair of the village of Skokie's Fine Arts Commission, and I'm joined by many of my fellow commissioners, who I'd like to take a moment to introduce. If you guys could stand up when I say your name. Michelle Beatrice. Pramay Joshi. Judy Levon. Sonia Asni. Mitch Thomas. And Vasvi Basavski. We also have our staff liaison, Meredith Goya, and then our trustee liaison, Ralph Klein. To celebrate the inaugural Skokie Arts and Humanities Month, the Fine Arts Commission has compiled a calendar of arts and humanities events taking place in Skokie during the month of October. The calendar can be viewed on the village website. We encourage you to check it out. There's something happening almost every day, whether it's an architectural tour, a performance at the North Shore Center for Performing Arts, a workshop at Devonshire Cultural Center, a concert at Siemens Violins, or St. Tim's Coffee House, or an open house at Midwest Clay Guild. There really is something for everyone. As mentioned in the proclamation, the arts and humanities are vital to a livable community, and is demonstrated by the diversity of events being held in Skokie in October. Skokie is a community that embraces the arts. But please remember, this calendar is just a one-month snapshot of the types of events that occur year-round in Skokie. We encourage you to take a look at the calendar, grab a friend, and find at least one event to attend, maybe somewhere you've never been before. And then please continue to support the arts in Skokie throughout the year. And you can start tonight by stopping by the Skokie Through the Lens Photography Exhibition being held right outside these doors in the lobby of Village Hall. And we're fortunate enough to be joined by some of the photographers being presented in the exhibition. I invite the photographers to stand up, and we can recognize you. Thank you for your contributions to the exhibition, and thank you, everyone, for continuing to support the arts.
And before we take a short break, so the photographers and the commission can have a reception and view the photography and view, I would like to introduce Mike Nelson. Mike, if you'd stand. This evening, Mike was approved by the village board to be the newest member of the Skokie Police Use of Force Review Board. So, Mike, thank you very much. And Jeff had introduced the commissioners of the Fine Arts Commission, and we thank you for everything that you do. The commissions in the village are the third pillar, elected officials, our appointed professional staff, and our boards and commissions. You do very important work for the village. You help us promote You help us promote the arts and humanities this month, as just an example. And we're grateful for the hours that you put in every year to help the Village become a great place to live. And Mike, get ready, we're going to put you to work. We appreciate your sense of volunteerism, and I enjoyed the conversation we had, so thank you. And so let's take a short break, so we can view the photography and thank everybody for their hard work. So, we'll take a five-minute break. I was remiss, I should have introduced Hillary Hunter. Thank you. Hillary, by the vote this evening, becomes a member of the Family Services Commission. I apologize. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is report of our Village Manager this evening, Nick Lyott.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees, and good evening. There are no items on the Village Manager's report, so that would complete my report.
Next item is report of our Corporation Counsel, Michael Lorg.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, good evening, everyone. I'm joined tonight by Jim McCarthy, who's a member of the Corporation Counsel's office. Items A, B, C on my report for tonight were approved as part of the consent agenda at the beginning of this meeting, so that completes all of those matters. I have only a request for an executive session in accordance with Paragraph Two, C-11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act pertaining to the review and discussion of pending litigation. Mayor, I'd ask for action on this request.
A motion for an executive session this evening would be in order. Trustee Coon, seconded by Trustee Robinson. Is there anything? I'll call the roll, please, on the executive session.
Trustee Sadkar.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Coon.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pior Slovein.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Van Duzen.
Aye, the motion passes.
That would complete my report for this evening.
Thank you. Yes?
I had a couple of things under unfinished business before we get to public comments. I just want to, so during unfinished business, I just want to quickly bring up two policy issues that we've initiated as a board, but there's not yet a clear timeline for kind of finishing them. So I just kind of wanted to bring these two things up. First is our appointment process for our Corporation Counsel's office. A year ago, last October, I requested that we discuss and consider revising this appointment process, since it hasn't really been updated since the late 1950s. In May, we discussed this issue publicly. There were a number of points of agreement with the board, and we decided to move forward with an ordinance. And in June, Mayor, you said that this would reach us in the near future. I'm really only bringing this up just because I want to make sure that this ordinance doesn't get kind of lost in the shuffle with everything else we've got going on. So I just want to make an agenda item request concerning this issue that we've talked about. Assuming that there's no objection, I'd like to request a first reading of a draft ordinance to update our appointment process for Village attorneys by the end of November, if possible. So sometime in our next three meetings. I'm hoping that's not too short a timeline, just because this is a really short section of Village Code that we're dealing with, and this kind of is an issue that we've been talking about for a while. So I just wanted to make that request, just to make sure that this is something we can start to finish by the end of the year. The second thing I wanted to bring up is a part of our sustainability plan that I get asked a lot about, and I actually got, I just got asked about it again last week, which is why I'm bringing it up. It's our gas-powered lawn equipment phase-out ordinance. In our sustainability plan that we approved last year, we determined that we were going to establish a gas-powered lawn equipment phase-out ordinance and a timeline for implementation. But we said it kind of vaguely as something that we were going to do within the first five years of this plan. I get asked about this about once a month, so I kind of want to ask this of our staff. My kind of question, I'm not asking for an ordinance, I'm not asking for-
We have a draft ordinance.
Oh, for?
A first draft.
Oh, wonderful. Is there a kind of a timeline for how this will be presented to the board? That's great news for me.
Probably, and don't hold me to it. Like I said, it's the first draft, probably January.
That's wonderful news. Awesome, thank you.
I made a, you may recall during the discussion on the sustainability, I made a commitment that evening that we would have an ordinance.
Okay.
So, we will.
I'm glad to know it's been drafted. That's wonderful. Awesome, that's all for me.
First draft. A public comment, is there anybody who wishes to address the Village Board? Just give us your name, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Board. Thank you for taking the time with me this evening. I live at 8316, I work at Central Park in Skokie. My name is Michael Irwin. I'm here to talk to about the contractors and the work they've done. I think the Village did a great job with this water main system that we had just put in. The main and the tie-in to the homes that were existing into this water project. Not throughout the whole village, it's our serious water mains that we had to address. They did a great job, the contractors did a great job. And on completion, we've also picked up from other problems of the main breaking from years down the line. The road buckled up a little bit in the center of Central Park, and the ambulance of the fire department, the new fire station that we have, Seventeen, the ambulance would bottom out and they went by. They don't do that anymore, so that's completed also. So the injured department did a great job on all of that. I'd like to just address this other issue that I brought up in the past, and it's called rats, rats, rats. It's something that we subbed out, it's something that we had to, because it's a big thing. When you go to the department and you find out paperwork is this much, that means we do have a problem in the village. We're trying to do the best we can, but we need a lot of help from the people that live here in the village. We have to know, lids have to be closed. That's one of the first things, because every night I see them running around on my block. And they're this big, chasing the little one. Now that becomes pretty bad when you can see that, okay? So I know we're doing the best we can, it's just that I got to bring it up every so often, because I see it all summer long, and it didn't get any better. And I realized that paperwork that I already was seeing. So my suggestion is, for some of the people that have sheds in their yards, that rat will burrow underneath that shed, and he's living underneath there. I see this at nighttime, they run across the alley from the garbage cans, through the water, little path. Reminds me of people coming from Mexico, how they cross the river, and they run across and into the little shed, burrowing underneath, and they're looking there. Now, it's hard to control that, because quite a few sheds are in our community. My suggestion on that is the people with sheds, that they build it up all around their particular sheds, that they store their materials in, and eliminate that problem. Hopefully, that they won't dig down, but I can't say that it's going to be a result. It's just something that we need to control the best we can and do what we can. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, and that gives me a chance to make a plug for composting. If you have not-
Sir. I'm sorry, Mayor. I wanted to make sure, I just caught him about the analogy that you used. I was offended by it. The Mexicans running through the river, the Mexicans running through the river. I just hope that we can find other analogies to explain.
Okay, well, I apologize for that mistake-
Thank you.
-that I made, but I also have to reemphasize the issue that's very, very important-
I get it.
...over the liver a long time. So I thank you, thank you for bringing that up, and I apologize for that statement that I made.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
One of the ways we can combat the problem of rats, and every community in Chicago, the suburbs, all have this problem, is to identify the source of food. And if you join the composting program, that will help us enormously with finding a way to stop the rat problem. Also, let's all pray for a very snowy weather, winter, and very low degrees. The last two winters have been pretty mild, and that has, I think, contributed, at least the experts tell us, have contributed to the problem. So, I guess what we want is a snowy and deep-freeze winter, and that will help us.
Yeah, that makes change.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Ivy Sundell, and I'm part of a group called Replace Plastic. And I'm here with two of my, two of the people in my group. We have the goal of helping Skokie retail businesses reduce plastic use, and to move away from fossil fuel and to help their customers make wise replacements. Many of the local businesses have already tried ways to move away from plastic bags, but they want, they don't want to alienate their customers. They can't do it alone. They need the Village to impose a plastic bag ban, so that it would apply to all the businesses, and they wouldn't be at a competitive advantage. We're requesting that the Village consider such a ban. I understand the ban has been recommended by CEAC for quite a few years, but now is the time for action. Climate change is already underway. We cannot delay moving away, moving away from fossil fuel any longer. Now is also the time, because Evanston just instituted a plastic bag ban and a Tencent bag tax. While half of that tax goes to the business, that's really not enough to cover the cost of switching, unless all the customers switch to reusable bags. And so we need to educate the customers to switch to sustainable alternatives. So now is really the time, because we can also learn from what Evanston has done, how they approached it and implemented it, and so we can do it better. We hope that your new plastic bag ordinance would come with guidelines to help the businesses with the transition, and we hope to work with your CEAC and your Get Task Force to design a better approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Lyvan. I live at 9052 Laramie in Skokie here. And Ivy came to the Pancake Breakfast a year ago and presented to me the idea that Skokie can do something in the area of reducing plastic. And so she spoke to our club, and our club printed a hundred and fifty bags, ridding the world of plastic, one bag at a time. And we handed a hundred and fifty of these out at the farmer's market prior to the bash, and had very positive responses to the goal of Ivy and the team here. And I just think it's something that the Village should really systematically look at and talk it through, and consider the needs of the business community. But in general, we are drowning under the amounts of plastic that we generate, and there's just, there's no place to put it. So it's up to us to really do something about that. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you.
I'm with the Mayor and the Board of Trustees. My name is Caesar Marion, and I reside in Evanston, but I have a business here in Skokie, Sketchbook Brewing Company. And Ivy came to me a few months ago, asking me to join the committee, and based, essentially, I believe, based on some of the practices that Sketchbook has been following for a while now, which is ourselves, we do not use plastic bags. We've been trying, I participated on the Skokie Sustainability Plan, so very familiar with everything that was suggested there, including banning plastic bags. I must say, Evanston, they did it. It wasn't easy, it wasn't pretty. But when that switch happened, I was very pleased to see, you know, the, no more plastic bags in my grocery store, and people starting to learn how to bring their own bags to the store. It's a combination of awareness of the businesses and also awareness of the customers, because now they have to, basically, they understand they have to pay a little bit for it. As a business, I'm here to, you know, help and help others understand how to, potentially, how to do this and how to do it well. I would love to see my place of business have an ordinance on this. We also, one of the reasons why we ask for an ordinance is because it's a lot easier for a business to point to an ordinance when we're telling customers why we're doing what we're doing. So it's not just our choice, it is our choice, but it's a lot easier to be backed up by the Village. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Howard Sproull. I live at 8649 Nile Center. And I want to speak-
How do you spell your last name?
It's S-P-R-O-U-L-L.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to speak on the lawlessness on our border, Illinois, Chicago. We are witnessing the largest criminal- the largest criminal trafficking, money laundering operation in our history. I'm calling it Cartel Norte Illinois because our government, our state officials and our city officials in Chicago are participating in this by allowing all these people to come in and allowing all their friends to get rich off the money that will flow to them to build all these containers or whatever they're going to do for these people. So it's nothing more than a cartel money laundering operation with humans paying the price. And I say any penny of our city budget that is either spent or received in this enterprise is criminal because we're participating in this. Any consent offered to this cartel Norte operation is direct support to cartel human traffickers and all the horror. Furthermore, I am will, I, and all who either willingly support or consent are accessories to this criminal human trafficking. Skokie must declare, we must declare, we consent not to cartel Illinois. We consent not to human trafficking. We value life. We value our citizens and our community. We will not have this in Skokie. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I meant to address the plastic bags. The Village Board, three months ago, hired a Sustainability Director. And she is going through the report, the goals of the Village. So be just a little patient. Give her a little bit of time. It was a pretty lengthy report. But that is an item that is on the agenda. So I'm not giving you a timeline, but I'm just telling you it is on the agenda. So thank you for coming this evening.
I hate to, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to understand the last public comment, Mr. Sproull.
Yes, sir.
You were talking about the trafficking. I'm just trying to seek to understand. What or who are you talking about?
I, I, I would ask you to just, you can certainly, if you can't see it for yourself, if you're asking me to tell you, I have nothing to tell you. I ask you to open your eyes and just see what's going on. It is just plainly apparent. If you don't see it, I would just say take the veils off your eyes. Do you have another question?
No.
Said enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sutker. Trustee Sutker.
Are you calling on me for...
Exactly.
Did we do the, the health plan?
Yes.
Okay.
It was under consent agenda.
Oh, okay. I thought we were going to go over it. I move we adjourn for executive session.
Okay.